We have some changes to the agenda.
Yes, the council see that there is a revised agenda that's been provided. There's a mayor requested that we be, I am the under consent agenda, the one day temporary liquor license for helping mark fire department. Down the general business to talk about a discussion or to discuss an adjustment in the hours of the license. Also, we've added an agreement of assessment and waiver of appeal. We've been working with Paige Conkle regarding the retaining wall in front of her property on St. Mary's Street. We found a solution and so we wanted to get it on the agenda tonight to be able to keep that moving along.
And there's no presentation tonight either?
No, I should note, mayor's correct, that is a carryover from the draft agenda. We are expecting those presentations in September or October, but it should have been moved out the final agenda.
Okay.
Motion to approve the amended, agenda as amended.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is adopted. No presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements, so we'll open up the public comment. Anyone care to speak any, for anything not on the agenda? I knew you would be.
Hi, everybody.
How's it going?
I just found out that the thing I was gonna pitch is already on the conflict. So what I wanted to do, I talked to Renee, is ailment own six acres through the girls' farm. Today I almost had a kid on Xerxes, didn't see him, came flying down and living on it's so dangerous. And I just, my father-in-law was giving me the history of everything because he's lived here forever. Cause I wanna help with the building, fill out my job application for a volunteer committee to bring in.
Nice.
And saw the start of the old railroad and thought, we should address that sooner than later and become a walking, biking path. Xerxes is getting faster, I was happy letting out my name, obviously seeing a cop pulled over somebody, which, it's a speedway. It, it's hard to live where I live, the curb is there, kids are out, everybody's out now. So I'd like to try to figure out how to get that proceeding faster than before. And then the other thing is like Ellen cost came from the DNR contacted me. And I guess I was supposed to talk to you, talk to you, talk to you, but about our well, when the pump test was going on, the discoloration, the smell, and the water pressure, talked to my father-in-law, he had the same thing, went up the hill, those of us around there. So I'm just putting on record that they are supposed to contact Ellen.
Yeah.
At the DNR if they have any kind of discrepancy of, and I put it on Facebook. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is the post that went on the city of Elkanew Market, how it got volatile. The OGs of Noda Niagara would never attack a person. Or their physical appearance or anything to add. Think they're, with the good intention of saving our resource, we've attracted some trolls who instigate a lot of stuff. And I just wanted to, well, I apologize for that behavior because I would never do that. And I don't want it to become a continual thing. I think it's very disrespectful, very disgraceful, and it defeats what we're trying to accomplish. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And Rachel Fitner, I don't know you, but that was uncalled for. And I don't tolerate that. So I sent her a private message because we that started this would never attack somebody, we're just trying to protect our wells.
Understood and all good. And thank you for all that you've given back to the community in the past year. You've been at every single meeting that I can think of.
What can I know is going on now?
Rallyed the troops and...
A lot of the same without, you know?
No, but...
There's a lot of people that will do stuff, they just wanna be asked.
But my, my, I guess where I'm going with this is like, you and I don't agree on several things, yeah. But I appreciate people that don't agree coming up and speaking and taking action. And that's how we grow as a community.
I don't agree on a lot of things that y'all do, but you're still a person.
Right.
I mean Josh and I spoke for an hour and a half and part of it was heated, part of it wasn't.
Right.
But you're still a person.
But good government and good, good government is ran by people that are good people and you're a good person. I appreciate your involvement, so.
I try, more people will come, there's a lot of great things that are gonna happen. I just wanna be more engaged, more involved, so that we can, as a unit, a community that seems to be torn apart right now, can come together. Cause it's really vicious out there.
You should see my Facebook Messenger.
I would never be mayor, I'm nervous, the council says, I don't wanna hear it, but I don't want it said inappropriately either.
For sure.
It's great to sit down with somebody, cause I would love to know somebody's side other than tax base.
Right, yeah.
Right.
We'll never agree on that, why not, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys, thank you.
I love your idea about the trail on the train track, if it's possible, like that's so cool.
Well, I don't even know, Tom, if it's possible, it's just, that road has become so, so dangerous. I was grateful that it didn't snow and ice, cause usually when we have bad weather, we get car parts in our front yard. Coming around the corner from Denny's house, it usually hits Allison Clements and ends up in a driveway or in a culvert.
So our intent has always been to try and acquire that as part of the park dedication requirements as the ailment property develops in the future.
Yeah.
We have suggested to them multiple times over the years that we would be willing to take it in advance of that and then have an agreement with them that absolves them of a portion or all of their park dedication requirements then in the future. We've done everything that we can sort of...
I'll talk to them.
Instead of buying it outright, we've talked to them multiple, multiple times about it.
Well, the, I mean, the cool part of the history of it and dealing with my father-in-law, who's lived here forever, is you could actually have a gathering place with some kind of placard, here was the depot. And as you go along the trail, you can have little placards explaining how Milwaukee was, I mean, it's just like, I think about the buildings lately and when I assess over something, obviously.
The city owns people right away where the granaries were, where it used to be.
Correct.
It's just what's currently on the girls' property, that section through there, we don't own it. And again, we've, we have presented all kinds of means for us to acquire it ahead of time, but the property owners too willing to do so.
Right, and I mean, I would, I think it would be great to get people that live on Xerxes, bikers, walkers, joggers, whatever, to go. Cause really, we don't have a whole lot of historical anything.
Yeah, history piece would be cool.
You know, and when the speedway goes away and it becomes houses, I'm looking for something to create a destination. You know, you can take this historical lock, you know, see what it was, I mean, that's just me trying to preserve something. Lot of, lot of lineage here, but we're losing it, so. Love it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Are we having some audio issues? Cool.
It was intentional.
Don't worry, you're recorded.
Do y'all need a quick minute to work on it, or? Okay, perfect. Anyone else here for a public comment?
So I asked the chambers to unmute, which will...
All right, consent agenda, anyone have items for consent? Like polled or whatever?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent is adopted, so we do have, we do have a public hearing? Totally missed that, I thought it was just a presentation. Is there, just open up the public hearing then, or?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief introduction.
Okay.
There is a lot of platted in Boulder Heights and a lot is gonna be replatted as part of Boulder Heights fourth edition. The util, the utility easements that exist on the lot as it is today need to be vacated. It's clear that tile issue, so public hearing is required to vacate drains and utilities.
Yeah, well, we'll open the public hearing at seven fourteen. Anyone here to comment? We will close the public hearing at seven fourteen. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, general business. We have the word of bond sales. Welcome.
Thank you. Tom, did you wanna say anything in the introduction, or should I just jump right in?
We all know you.
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Bruce Kamel of others, and here tonight to present some really good bond sale results for the city. So I believe you all have this sale day report on your computers, and I'll just hit a few highlights. So as you may recall from the pre-sale discussion last month, the city went to the markets to finance three individual projects, two relating to a whole new market and one for your pavement reconstruction plan, or rehabilitation improvements for this year. We did receive seven bids on the city's behalf at ten this morning, and the low bid came from R W Baird's, a desk out in Milwaukee. If you look at the bid tabulation on either the second or the third page, depending on how you count, you can see that Baird brought a lot of other underwriting firms along with them. This is very common for them, they like to build a syndicate, as it's called, of other underwriting firms so that they can really offer the lowest possible interest rate, and they win a lot of competitive sales as a result of that. Their true interest rate with their bid was about three point six percent. And if you look at the other six bids that we received on the next page, you can see that they're all pretty close to each other. The cover bid, second place bid from Northland was at three sixty-six, and then you can see all the way down to Steeple at a three seventy-nine. So we were really pleased with the amount of interest in the city's bond sale and with the end result. One other thing I'll note about the Baird bid, if you go back to that first page of the bid tabulation, you've encountered this before with city bond issues, but I just wanted to remind you what's going on with this coupon versus the maturity yield. You can see that the coupon rates on the bonds are around four and five percent, but the re-offering yields, really the true cost to the city, is it all in the three percent range. And so what's going on there is the underwriting firm wants scale to offer bonds with high coupon, but they know the market actually for muni bonds is more in that three percent range. So what they did is they offered you about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think?
Two hundred and fifty-six.
Excuse me?
Two fifty-six.
Two fifty-six, to be precise, of extra proceeds in exchange for those higher coupon or face interest rates. It turns out that the city is looking at some possible cost increases for some of these projects. And so after consultation with Tom and Kelly, we decided, they decided, and, and we made this happen, to keep the premium that was received from Baird, so you have more in your project fund. So if you look at the sources and uses of funds after the bid tabulation, if you look under the uses of funds, you can see that now there's just under three point four million dollars that's going into the various project construction funds. And that's up from about a three point two million dollars, a little bit less than that in the pre-sale numbers. So I know it's kind of a weird dynamic, but essentially by taking this premium that was offered from Baird and adding it to the construction fund, you've got a little bit more cushion for the, the projects and won't have to tip into general reserves in the event of overruns.
And if we end up not needing to use that additional cash, it gets moved from the project fund to the debt service fund, and you already have seed money, so you can use it to buy down what you would normally have to, normally have the money. So it's only basically getting more, it's basically building a greater contingency without having a bond for anything additional.
And I would note that those extra proceeds, actually all the bond proceeds can be invested, and short-term interest rates are really good, so you can actually earn interest on those bond proceeds until Rich needs them to pay contractors. So it's, it's, it's a pretty efficient market right now, in that even though interest rates on bonds are a little bit higher than we've had in the past, it's really nice that you're not having what's called negative arbitrage while you're sitting on those proceeds, waiting to use them. I did wanna go into too much detail on the bond runs, I just included a few pages. You'll recall that you're using a combination of tax levy, special assessments, and revenues from your utility funds to repay the bonds in different combinations for the three purposes. Please know that there are about thirty pages of bond projections following today's sale. Kelly has them all, I didn't feel like you needed to see all thirty pages. But just know that, you know, you do have debt schedules, not only for the overall bond issue, but for each of those individual purposes, so that your team can budget and plan accordingly. And then finally, Mr. Mayor and council, I did want to note the credit rating from S and P Global Ratings. As you know, you have maintained a very positive double A plus rating with S and P for a number of years now. And that rating was affirmed with flying colors as part of this bond issuance process. Have to say that's probably one of the fastest rating calls I've been on recently, because Tom and Kelly did such a great job of preparing. And also, there's really just very little stress on the city's finances due to the good decisions you've made as a governing body and the, the work of your staff to implement that. So everything looks very strong with your local economy, your available reserves, your financial management practices. I will note that they use specific adjectives that are defined within their rating methodologies. The individual analysts don't have the ability to use different adjectives. When you see the word weak, desperate, that's really just part of a matrix. And since you're a growing community that has a relatively high amount of debt, that's really normal for a city like Elkanew Market, but it falls within the weak category. However, everything else being so strong definitely outweighs, well, the debt rates are not even a concern. They just, again, use that adjective, and everything that you can really control is, is looking very good. So congratulations on that and on today's bond sale results. I'll be happy to answer any questions and then ask you to take up the resolution awarding the bonds fair.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? Anyone have motions?
Motion to approve twenty-four dot, no, not that one.
Yeah, twenty-four thirty-two.
Yeah, twenty-four dot thirty-two.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to work with the city and congratulations again.
Thank you, thank you for all your help. Okay, the one-day temporary onsite liquor license, the only thing I wanted to tweak is just the hours from, rather than twelve to six, but to make it eleven to six. Anyone object to that?
A revised resolution has been provide, or showing the change has been provided.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-four twenty-eight.
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you.
Motion by Amanda, second by Gina, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. And one more item, the assessment waiver appeal?
Yep, so I've updated the council on the discussions we've been having with Ms. Conkle related to a number of issues, all centered around the existing retaining wall on the property and different options that we've arrived at. In speaking with Ms. Conkle, who's here this evening, she's indicated that she opted for just removing, removing the wall. And so we've provided for the council, basically, resolution twenty-four thirty-three that would approve and adopt the special assessments and the assessment agreement associated with it. This is limited to the work that would be done associated with removal of the wall and restabilization of the bank and that type of work. The other assessments, more largely associated with the project, that would be handled through the normal assessment process for the larger project. I'd also like to note that in order to keep costs under control and such, we're gonna be utilizing internal resources for a portion of that work as well.
Okay.
So we'd be asking the council to approve twenty-four thirty-three, subject to execution of the agreement by Ms. Conkle.
So moved.
Motion by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Kate. Before we vote, are you okay with everything that's being proposed?
I would like to just have some questions.
Come on up.
I don't remember if that's true.
Yeah.
My name is Paige Conkle, as to, I've been working with Rich all over too. We've talked about it, there came some options, a lot of the options were too expensive for me. So this thirty-five hundred was something that was feasible for me with the assessment. The only concern I have is my house is like a hundred and two years old. So I just wanna make sure that when we are doing this, that there isn't gonna be like, I know I kind of skimmed everything because I was just handed it to them, but I just wanna make sure that there, like, if there's a structural issue or anything like that that calls out that like, that's none of your responsibility, and I understand like, the city doesn't wanna pay for any of that, but what happens if like, my structure falls or like, things get damaged? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
How pricey or how damaging this could get when they start pulling those kind of things down.
So just to summarize, when we start pulling out the wall, if the house tips over, who's responsible for it? Is that kinda?
Yeah, like, I'm just concerned if, you know, like, I don't, one, I haven't talked to my insurance about, you know, what happens if something gets damaged in this situation? But also the fact of like, you know, like, if it leads to a point of my house being unlivable for me.
Right.
Where do I go from that?
Good question.
So in these types of agreement, it is normal for, when we're doing this type of work, to indemnify ourselves. And the reason that we do it is so that we don't receive frivolous claims that, oh, something, I have a new crack in my basement foundation wall, it must have been because of the work that you did, sort of short-circuit that. Now, in reality, the work that we're doing is a distance out from the house. The wall that's there was not there with the original construction of the house, it was a slope. So we believe that the likelihood that there would be any direct impact to the house is really low. Now, Ms. Conkle does have the option to not have us do anything. As I've explained to the council in past conversations, we have a solution for that too. The whole intent of this was to try and provide a way to help Ms. Conkle address the situation with the deteriorating wall, address our issue with how we're servicing, replacing the service line, and find a win-win situation. I would defer any questions about recommendations related to assumption of liability to the person to my right, the city attorney. But that type of language and that type of agreement is fairly, is, is typical. If we were truly worried that there would be issues, now I can understand Ms. Conkle's concern about, you know, waiving any potential recourse, but I'll be honest, I would be hesitant to move forward with doing the work if we didn't have that language in there.
I'm not suggesting we don't have that language, I'm just, what is the pro, how does she make sure her property is covered, her structure is covered?
That would be her homeowner's insurance.
Okay, so that, that would be, I guess, the direction to talk to insurance agents, see if they can make sure you're covered during the process.
Well, and maybe question or follow-up, like, is there a timeline that we need to do this for the work to get done? You know, could we delay it to the next meeting to give time, or it needs to get done so that we can move forward with work, or?
Well, we could probably pass it, but until she signs it, nothing's...
True, true, okay, so as long as you don't sign it, you can, yeah.
I, I tried to push through tonight because they could very well be removing that wall next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know the timeline of anything, I haven't got the opportunity to talk to the supervisor on the job or anything like that, so I don't know where they're at. I just know they installed the large part of the water main yesterday.
The water main is in, and the next thing, where they're working on services, or on storm sewer in that intersection, and then they'll be putting water services in, and so they can do yours last to give a little more time, but they will need to do that one way or the other, so.
So that's why we'd recommend the contingent approval to allow, because Paige just got this, to give her an opportunity to review it and make decisions. Normally, we would get the signatures, you know, before we come to you, but that would be not fair to her, so.
So if we vote to approve this, are you okay holding off on signing until you have all your questions answered?
I think I am okay with the approval part of it, I just wanna make sure, you know, that it is something that is thought of in the structure. And we had talked about, you know, like, the vegetation and stuff, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, the seating and stuff was done right away. And we talked about that. But yeah, I just wanna make sure that a lot of it is like stabilized as soon as, as well as we can, just because that concern is there.
We know too, we don't wanna do it twice. But I have a thought, we can talk after the meeting, I have an idea that maybe we could have an expert look at that, because we have him on the job for compaction and stuff, and see if I can navigate that with the contractor and maybe get you some, just an opinion on the stability.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not like, my concern is I'm not home during the day.
Sure.
And like, sometimes I'm not there until midnight one, I have two jobs, so like, if something happens and I'm not there, what am I supposed to do? Like, I don't want to come home to everything.
Right.
Yep.
Everything down, you know, so I understand, but it's like, as you can tell, it is concerning.
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely.
Did you have any other questions or anything?
No, I think that's it, like, I kind of feel like I have no, like, idea that I can choose not to do it, but then the option of it falling down is, is more probable with them doing the rubber. But, and I agree with Sol's work for that, which I can afford to take on. So I have to let, allow the wall to be taken down and see what happens with the structure kind of things, but it is just a concern, so.
For sure.
I do approve of the construct like capacity, but I just wanted you to know that I have those concerns. I don't want to lose my house in a situation or also not able to pay for the fact to redo the wall, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a motion, we have a second, all in...
One item, so the percentage is, interest rate is blank? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we heard now it'll be five point one percent.
Yes.
So if you would amend the resolution to include the interest rate at five point one percent as part of the motion?
Sure. Do we need to cancel the previous motion and re-motion it, or?
You could just have a motion to amend the resolution to five for the interest rate.
So moved.
Then it's higher than the road.
It'll be the same.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But Rich, you were gonna talk to her afterwards, right? Okay, so now it's amended, so now we gotta vote on the...
All right, we, we passed the amendment to the resolution, now I guess we need to vote on the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I hope we did that all legally. Reports. Anything for administration?
Nope.
Police, no, well, public works, there's probably no reports, so, police.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have a very short report. Might be thick, but for your enjoyment, in case you have a hard time sleeping tonight, here's our annual report.
Thank you.
It's been on our department's...
Website for a little bit, basically just to do a kind of a state-of-the-department-type annual report for 2023. No fancy PowerPoint or anything, just you got the nitty-gritty in front of you there. So for 2023, in the annual report, in my letter, chief's message, I dubbed it the year of change. This year, 2023, in my five years as tenure here, has been the greatest amount of change that I've seen. As you know, at the end of 2022, we had the resignation of Officer Hoteling, who left Rosemount. And then in the beginning of 2023, we had the resignation of Officer Car cuff, who left to pursue a police position in another department. So losing one-third of our department at the end of 2022 into 2023. But that led to some awesome hires, so when something's kind of wrecked, you gotta break a few eggs, but you make an omelet, make it better. Led to the hiring of three police officers within the year. Officer Steven Senden, who came from Carver County, Officer Zach Batolff, who came from loss prevention department at Coles, and Officer Jeff Adabo came from Apple Valley PD. This was largely facilitated by the public safety funding legislation that was passed in 2022. Both Officer Adabo and then recently hired Officer Barry, both came with the assistance of the legislative money. both came with the assistance of the legislative money. Um, the intent of those funds was to help Minnesota Police Departments with retention and recruitment. And we found, uh, as we interviewed those officers, their biggest issue was, uh, officer safety working by themselves. So, we felt the best use of this fund, and it was backed by the council and the mayor, was to hire, uh, future officers earlier, to bolster our ranks, to increase the amount of double coverage together. Um, and, uh, it helped with the retention of the officers, gave new life, um, to the officers. Uh, the extra staff helps in many ways to the community. Officer safety is there's more overlap and dual coverage. Um, the community's safer, as the gaps in coverage is greatly reduced. And, um, the ease of granting time away from works, our staff can, um, take time off to be with their families and really develop that work-life balance. Um, and, uh, really, what that funding did is bring our twenty twenty-six service levels two years earlier, which is huge for our department. Um, the attitude, the mood, the officers working and having somebody in the community with them, you can't put a price tag on that, there is a price tag, and we appreciate the investment by the council and the mayor to make that happen along with the legislative money. Uh, quick, the department stats, cuz these are, uh, well-liked by everybody, wanna know numbers, wanna know, you know, uh, what's going on in the department. Calls for service over, in twenty twenty-three, over twenty-two, were up six point two percent. These are the actual calls from the community needing our police department. Um, these are not calls initiated by the officers. Um, couple, when I give you that number, I like to try to give you my estimate or educated guess why that is. Um, I think the increase in the amount of traffic in town to QuickTrip, the construction of QuickTrip, and the increase in houses and residents within the city are, uh, help contribute to that. There is an unknown flux that happens, and you'll see some of that in, uh, in the other stats, um, that can't really, you don't know why that happened. Um, the amount of juveniles who are in a certain portion of their development in a community will increase the call load. It just, it's hard to nail down the exact cause. Um, but, total calls handled by the police department, and these are calls that are initiated by the officers, so they're doing it, and the calls for service. Everything we do, from doing reports at the front desk, um, processing reports for other agencies, data requests, everything we do, traffic stops, um, extra patrols, that's down two point six percent. And these, it makes sense, are down, and they should be down a lot more with our staffing, but it shows you our officers that we did have are out there working their tails off. Um, but it's, we were so down in staff for twenty twenty-three. And not only just down in staff, when we're training officers, we were taken out of the road so much more cuz we're covering laws, covering policies, covering everything. So, it really should have been down more. Um, when you figure thirty percent of our department was gone for a good portion of the year, and then in training, that number should have been way down, but it wasn't, cuz our officers really stepped up and worked a ton. Burglary, uh, we had one in one in twenty twenty-three versus zero the prior year. Um, it's hard to say what causes a hundred percent increase, but it's, when it's zero to one, shouldn't be a concern. I will point out, too, that in twenty twenty-three, we were the fourth safest city in Minnesota on top of it, and I wanna kinda balance that. Assault, uh, increase in twenty twenty-three from four versus three in twenty twenty-two. So, again, that's a large increase percentage-wise, but not really when total calls. Um, if I were to share with the three hundred chiefs that were at the conference, that, yeah, I had, uh, four assault calls in twenty twenty-three, they'd fall over, I mean, they just couldn't believe it. Um, the fact that our community was awesome enough to have zero burglaries in twenty twenty-two and one in twenty twenty-three, those are amazing numbers, and that is why the community is so safe. Um, thefts dropped from twenty-seven in twenty twenty-two to sixteen in twenty twenty-three. That's a forty percent drop in thefts. Um, I'd like to take full credit for it, but again, I can't, it's the community. Um, we were down in staff, but we were out there a ton in force, hitting our extra patrols. Really, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, um, you can see where, we only had two point six percent drop in our officer-initiated, um, calls, so they were really working hard. Um, I think that, I think, um, just overall, the crime trend in the metro area has been going down for these type of crimes, as we're starting to catch up from COVID and put more people in jail and keep our bad people out. Uh, Minneapolis in the last six months has extremely increased their juvenile enforcement, and a lot of property crimes, these theft from cars, theft from, um, garages and things being totaled, are juvenile-driven, not from our community, but others coming into our community. So, I think the overall trend in the Twin Cities, a lot of these property crimes have been decreasing. Assaults and other things have been going up, especially as you get closer into Minneapolis, but these property crimes are down, and a forty percent drop is fantastic, and I think that contributed to our rating in twenty twenty-three as well. Um, traffic stops dropped thirty-nine percent in twenty twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-two. Up to November of twenty twenty-two, we're fully staffed, fully authorized strength, so we had a ton of traffic stops, twenty-two hundred, a little over, and we're down to thirteen forty-nine. Again, that's due to having so much less staff, so many, uh, less officers out there hitting the road for the training. Um, citations dropped the exact equal amount, and, uh, I don't have the stat in here, but you can see from your, um, the graphs there, that our percentage of citations has not changed. We're, uh, running about twenty percent of our traffic stops, get a ticket or a citation, which is right where I wanted to be, which is one in five. Um, and, uh, that didn't change, so it's good to see, even though we're less staffed, we're staying consistent with our stops. Traffic crashes dropped sixteen percent from thirty-eight to thirty-two. Injury crashes stayed the same at three total for the year. Um, I'm proud to say again, uh, even since before I got here, and I'm knocking on wood for those at home listening, um, we've had zero fatal crashes in the last six years. And I just don't have the stats before that to say how long it's been, but it's been quite a while. Uh, on top of that, our squad car fleet increased notably in twenty twenty-three. Um, it took eighteen months to get a Ford Explorer. Due to, um, sourcing issues and, uh, um, all the different problems. We put in the request in twenty twenty-two, and we just got the car up and running three weeks ago. So, um, what we did is to anticipate that we increased our squad car fleet from three fully marked and up and outfitted squads to four. We did that by not selling the current squad car, but just buying the equipment for the new squad car. So, there wasn't a huge expenditure, we didn't have to buy all the equipment, we were able to use some, um, sourced used equipment to outfit that car. So, we didn't have to increase the budget to increase our squad car fleet. So, now we're at four, we have four inside, um, stalls in our garage. So, now, with the increase in staff and being up fully loaded, we're gonna have more, um, double and sometimes triple coverage, so we need that four squad. Um, so that's why we increased that. Um, and we feel it's sustainable to, we normally hold the car six years to push that to seven, and then really evaluate the miles we're putting on the cars. If we have more cars, we can put less miles cuz we spread those miles out over vehicles. And I, since I drive the oldest car, due to my admin duties, I'm not out patrolling as much, so that car will last longer. And then notables for the year, in twenty twenty-three, we updated our, um, firearms for the police department, department issued. We went to red dot sights and new flashlights on a whole new pistol platform. That process took a year and a half, initiated by, um, Senior Officer, uh, Josh Gares, and super comprehensive, and happy to say that, um, our officers are a little bit safer due to this and new, new equipment. Um, it was super comprehensive, and most of the cost, I'd say eighty-five percent of the cost was paid for by criminals, uh, through the Minnesota For, or our forfeiture fund, meaning that these are funds we took, um, from drug dealers, uh, drunk drivers through vehicle forfeitures, paid for by those criminal acts. Statute allows us to use those funds to, uh, make our officers safer and help with enforcement. Um, with that, I wanted to allow some time for questions, if anybody had any about this, uh, last year, the, the numbers that they saw. I'm proud of this report, I think it's great overall, it's been online. Uh, anybody who wants to see it can go on our page and, uh, and look at it.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions?
No, thank you so much.
Thank you, Council, really appreciate all your support a ton, and, uh, our officers feel that, and they appreciate it, along with the community. Um, it's hard to fight the waistline growth with all the, uh, love we get through baked goods and gifts and everything, so it's a great problem to have, though. Thank you.
I, well, actually, I just wanna say one thing, not a question, but, um, it was probably a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago now, maybe longer, but one of our officers, and I didn't get a good look or know who, um, stopped and talked to my twelve-year-old son and one of his friends, and just chatted for a little bit, gave him stickers, um, I think maybe even some tattoos and stuff, and I, I just think that's so cool. So, thank you for that.
I appreciate that, and, um, that, being able to do that, um, is a direct reflection on the investment by you, the council, the mayor, the community, and their staff. I've always said this, that once we get behind, we can't catch up. You're keeping our staffing, I know it's expensive, most expensive labor department in the city, but you're keeping that staff at a level that allows us to do that, and that allows us to drive around. And that was, um, Officer Zach Batolff that day. Um, I think you passed the kudos on to Tom, it got to me and it got to the officer. And then also, before I got here, you've invested, and I don't even know if you realize this, but we have a budget now for those community resources. Um, even though the mayor doesn't like the swag for business and stuff, um, our children and, um, our community members love those stickers and tattoos. I use that budget, um, at the school. I, another thing I didn't put on here, last year, we did thirty-five lunches, I'm already at forty-five lunches with the kids this year. Um, they love the tattoos and stickers, it goes, it's hard to put a price on it, but it is better than, uh, pencils and the bottles, so I agree with you, Mayor, on that end. Thank you, appreciate it.
Stickers. Thank you, Chief. Engineering.
I do not intend to spend that money, uh, if I can help it, but it is very, have that as a, cuz, uh, we were, we were losing some sleep, um, on, uh, you know, some overruns with head ramps, which require a lot of the new standards are very different than what they used to do, so it just takes more removal to make all those grades work. Uh, on the re, uh, rehab project, on the reconstruction project, um, our nemesis is bad soil. We have some areas of that project that after they've dug, put the pipes in and backfilled, you're probably familiar with waterbeds?
Yeah.
You can, it's like.
Where are you going with this?
Stand on that ground, it'd be like standing on a waterbed.
Oh, no.
Okay.
And it's, it's.
Oh, no.
So, we've, we've come up with some, some strategies, uh, to try and not just take all that soil out and buy soil to put back. Uh, it seems to be working, um, and we'll continue to do that, try and, and do things surgically, not just throw money at it to make it go away. But otherwise, the jobs are going pretty well. Um, uh, we've got good contractors, it's, uh, nice to see them very diligently pursuing work. If you have any questions, I can answer those, but that's all I have to tell you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Uh, community development.
Uh, only thing I have is just to remind the council that there's a planning commission meeting on Tuesday night, and we do have two public hearings on the agenda. One is related to a proposed development north of City Hall. Uh, eighty-six lots, I think, on thirty-three acres at the east end of James Parkway. And then the other, the second public hearing is related to the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning amendment submitted by RNF Properties on the Speedway property in that area. Uh, you'll recall those conversations about a month ago. So, based on the direction received by the council at the meeting on March fourteenth, that is what we are carrying forward to a public hearing. Um, regiding a portion of the site to high-density residential, and then a portion of, of that commercial area to mixed use that would only allow residential above the main floor. Um, it's not mandatory, they could just do commercial, but they would have the option to do, uh, housing above the main floor. Um, and then the remainder of the Speedway, uh, property, south of Marketplace, uh, as directed by the council, the mixture of low and medium-density residential, so we haven't gotten a lot of phone calls, but we did send out, um, a couple hundred notices on those public hearings, so.
Okay, is there any other way that the public hearing is, um, or that the community is notified of public hearings? Is there a website, or?
Yeah, we will, um, probably post on the website, we probably should have done it earlier this week, but have been crunching on the packet, but, um, we will post on the city's website tomorrow of those public hearings. Um, they're advertised, um, just through the regular planning commission meetings, but, um, all property owners located within three hundred and fifty feet of the property received it, uh, of either of those properties, received a direct mailing to their home.
Okay, so everyone, a lot of people I've talked to, they don't have any idea that the, um, racetrack is not gonna be there forever. So, I think it will be a shock to a lot of people.
All right. Uh, anything for parks?
Um, no.
Okay. Uh, C C E C. There's a port in the packet, I know.
Yes, um, I just wanna note, or I guess throw kudos out to the Fire Rescue Days Committee, there's been ninety-four hundred dollars in donations, and that was as of when we met on the sixteenth, so.
Shout out to Jody.
Thanks, Jody.
Hey, you're welcome.
You're doing great. Um, there's a Facebook page, it's E N M Fire Rescue Days, I think is what it is titled, that also is rocking the advertising for Fire Rescue Days, but I just wanna give kudos cuz it looks like it's gonna be a good, good weekend.
All right.
That's all I got.
Um, other reports, Scale Exec is next week, and then the Scale General meeting is after that, uh, or the week after that. Anything for Service Delivery?
Uh, two primary discussion topics was an update on the legislation that Alcoa New Markets currently is taking spirit on, related to municipal dispensaries. Um, the other, and what the largest discussion is, is Commissioner Beer wanted to have a discussion with representatives of the cities related to city township relationships, uh, given the portion of the county that he represents, and given the urban versus rural development issues related to industrial and commercial development over by Jordan and in Spring Lake Township, or not Spring Lake Township, south of Prior Lake. Um, there, uh, it was felt to be a big issue. Um, and, uh, so there's a general discussion of, of how do we all get along, kind of a deal? And what I took out of the conversation is it depends on where you are and what's going on currently. Um, the point that was made by a lot of the people in the room is, it's all great to talk about that, but you can't really go anywhere with it unless everybody's in the room and everybody's willing to put their best foot forward, and everybody wasn't in the room, and there were lots of examples of people not putting their best foot forward, so. Um, I made the point that, uh, we've had ebbs and flows with our relationship with our neighboring township. Um, overall, it's been very good, and it's good because we communicate with them, and we've created opportunities to have communication, and, um, that seemed to be one of the big takeaways from it. There was really no action item that came out of it, um, and I'm not sure that there was intended to be one. Um, I think it was more of a, um, let's talk about it and maybe it goes somewhere. let's talk about it, and maybe it goes somewhere outside of the meeting type of discussion. Um, uh, coming, upcoming meetings, at our next meeting, one of the things that's come up is, uh, right now, uh, the fire burn permits, so not your recreational fire, but I'm gonna build a, burn a big pile of brush, um, have for the last close to thirty years been issued out of Frege's Drywall, because that's where the chief sat, and him or members of his staff have been issuing fire permits forever. Um, that is at a point, and I've asked the chief about having it come down to City Hall, and he's like, nope, everybody already knows where to go. Well, Todd's reached the point where he's like, nope, it needs to go down to City Hall. So we're starting to take a look at that, and I've had our staff take a look at the process here and other places to, if we're gonna make a change, let's do it well, and our staff has found that a number of counties around the state do it online for the entire county, and it's not done by individual fire departments, and so I'm gonna be bringing that up at Service Delivery of, should we be looking at something like that um, at a county-wide level to save efficiencies for, for everybody? So, um, just, that's an example type of things we work on there, so.
Thank you.
And just so you know, we issue about four hundred of, Todd issues about four hundred of those a year.
Really?
Interesting.
You're like the farmers and stuff?
Sure, still, that's a lot.
Uh, I thirty-five.
There wasn't one in April, there will be one in May, I'm guessing.
Discussion by council. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Gina. All in favor?
Aye.